All right, let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of council are present with the exception of Councilor Santiago who is excused. Or she's.
I'm here.
Okay, who is actually on Teams? Thank you, Jeanette. Approval of tonight's agenda, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the removal of item number four, the denial of business registration for Pierce Ball, Sarge LLC.
So moved.
Hearing a motion by Counselor Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
Saying by Counselor Pauling, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, are there anyone that would like to speak tonight on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move forward to the consent agenda. November 21st, 2022, City Council work session minutes and November 21st, 2022, City Council meeting minutes. You have a motion?
So move.
Hearing a motion by Counselor McHugh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel President Bryson, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, resolution number 22-21, a resolution adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing resolution number 17-12. City manager reigns.
Yes, Mayor and Council, so this is a follow-up from the work session on November 21st in which we had discussed the current contracting limits and rules. I'm going to let Q walk you through the staff report real quick and then we'll see if you've got any questions.
Here, Council, following the last work session we had on this topic, we've brought the proposed resolution with the proposed amounts back to you. The only changes to the old resolution 17-12, you can see in section 3B delegation, that's changing both of those amounts for capital and non-capital contracts to $75,000.
Any questions by Council? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel President Bryson.
I move City Council adopt resolution number 22-21, a resolution adopting public contracting rules and procedures and repealing resolution number 17-12.
Hearing a motion by Counsel President Bryson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Pauling, any discussion?
Mayor?
Counsel Santiago?
Um, I did see that there is the, the 5% additional preference for, for businesses or contractors within the state of, that are registered with the state of Washington or, or headquarters in state of, I'm sorry, not Washington, Oregon. And, but I didn't see anything, and it was discussed last time, preference to small diverse businesses. And if I missed it, can you let me know if I missed it?
No, the 5% preference that Counselor Santiago is mentioning, I'm trying to find which section precisely that's in.
Section, section H.
Section H. I'm going to defer to the city attorney and the city manager about the.
Yeah, I mean, the, these rules are modeled after the state's or inter-bide statutes regarding public contracting, and so that's where that language would have been.
Um, yeah, but the, the state is moving more into supporting small diverse businesses in, in procurement, so I'm wondering if we can adopt those type, those types of policies.
Yes, so, I mean, those, yes, depending on the scale of projects, so there, there's certain, based on the cost of the project, that's when those rules go into effect. Then we, we have to also look at them on a project-specific basis because there's some, for instance, I have a patrons, for instance, of that nature. So the, that's. These are, these are the state's kind of safe harbor regulations or suggested public contracting. If we want to deviate from that and if we want to award points based on a hyper-local, so based on Columbia County, I think we'd have to take a look at whether we can, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor. Counsel Miller.
So this topic that came before us is, was predominantly based on raising the limits. The issue of giving preference points is another topic that I think we would need to address, and that, but from the last, last council meeting, it was basically establishing that during an RFP evaluation that certain businesses could qualify for preference points, basically. My understanding, what we talked about?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't know if that addresses the issue, but it's, to me, it's a separate topic that needs to come back to council.
And I think it's, it's something that I have to, it's not something I've looked at in a while, so I want to reacquaint myself with it. There's certain categories, certainly veteran-owned, minority-owned, women-owned businesses that if they qualify for a state program, then they can be awarded points. And then depending on the size of the project, sometimes there are kind of thresholds that need to be met as far as that goes, but I, I would need to do a little bit more research and then we're going to bring that back in a work session.
Mr. Mayor. It was my understanding is Counselor Miller is reiterating that this discussion was solely on, on a dollar amount and that Counselor Santiago's recommendations were going to be brought to council at a separate time, not with this piece of information or this change, and that we could look at that topic on its own in the future. So Counselor Santiago, does that seem?
Yes, it does, it's just that it's part of the ordinance in section H, and I wasn't sure if it was going to adopt, if we weren't able to revisit this on a later date.
Mr. Mayor. So did we change anything related to section, section H, or is that a carryover from previous language? Okay, so to me, I think having, addressing Counselor Santiago's request on a different topic would be most appropriate.
Right, so if we were to do, if, assuming this is a council priority and it kind of sounds like it's something you want to look at, it's something that we would need to do by ordinance because it's actually legislative change versus this, this fixing the dollar amount as an administrative change, which is why we're doing it via resolution. So it's, again, unless you want to do a 360-degree look at all this, which would kind of slow this down, then by keeping it strictly administrative, that's how we're able to do it.
So you're saying that if we adopt, I'm sorry, Peter, so you're saying if we, if you adopt the ordinance tonight, we won't be able to revisit any of the sections?
No. I'm saying the opposite, so when we do an ordinance, it's for city legislation, and the reason that it takes you, the reason it doesn't go into effect for 30 days is it's so members of the public could refer that to a vote if they wanted to. So anything that has a large-scale impact on the city, so what we consider, you know, legislative, then that's done via ordinance. If we're doing something that's administrative in nature, that's done via resolution and those go into effect immediately. So those can't be referred to, can't be referred to voters and, and are, like, like the decision to apply for a grant, that's something that would be administrative in character. To file any sort of application administrative in character, to change the dollar limit, that's administrative in character. To change the overarching scoring that we would use, awarding contracts, like globally, that's something that would be legislative in character and where we'd have to do all those extra steps to make sure that the public had more ability to participate, because they can have kind of overarching impacts on businesses and the city and et cetera versus just a simple change of a monetary amount. So that, that's why we would want to have that conversation and then make that change via ordinance, because it's city, it will be city legislation.
Okay, so for record purposes, I'm just, I, I would like to address this on a later date, just to put that on the record, and, and if we're talking about the amount of the threshold of 50, of 75 versus 50,000, I might, I would like to just keep it at 50 because you do have the emerg, on, then there's another section, section G, which is emergency contracts, which the mayor, the city manager can designate or do emergency authority of, of purchases in, for goods and services and maybe awarded in public improvements, so section three, G3A and G3B. So I just, firstly, I think 50K, 50,000 at the threshold is, I would like to keep it that way, but I, I think I'm going to be overruled.
All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing no more discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe, Jeanette, you are a no?
Yes, I'm a no.
Okay. Just want to make sure it was correctly on the record. All right, moving forward, next item, ordinance number 909, an ordinance relating to land use, admitting the Scappus zoning map and approving the Buxton Ranch Plan Development, subdivision conditional use and sensitive lands development permit application. As a public hearing of first reading. I am calling this public hearing to order, consider a consolidated application for subdivision plan development overlay zone change conditional use and sensitive lands development permits for floodplain, wetland, slope hazards and fish and riparian corridor. Procedure for this hearing will follow a strict format. Testimony and evidence must address the criteria that apply to the decision as described in the staff report or to the criteria the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Persons may speak only after being recognized by the mayor and must come forward to the microphone or be called on by the mayor or online participants wishing to speak and state their name and city for the record. Only testimony that is relevant to the application will be considered. In material or repetitious testimony will not be allowed and a time limit of five minutes will be imposed for each person wishing to testify. Failure to raise and clarify an issue to afford all parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on the issue. The council will conduct this hearing as a quasi-judicial capacity for the conditional use, plan zone, development overlay zone and unsensitive land development permits. In other words, like a court trial where the council serves as the finders of fact based on the relevant approval criteria. Verbal testimony during the hearing is allowed for quasi-judicial decisions. This is a consolidated hearing and the subdivision application shall be processed as a limited land use decision, which does not take verbal testimony because it does not require interpretations or the exercise of policy or legal judgment. Therefore, any verbal testimony shall be limited to issues related to the conditional use, plan development, overlay zone change, and the sensitive lands development permits approval. There shall be no audience demonstrations or other contact which would disrupt the hearing. Does any council member wish to declare any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest regarding this matter? Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I do declare ex parte in a few different moments over the last few months. I would say that in August, I was approached by former Counselor Haugen in regards to an invite to attend a discussion in regards to the proposed development. I declined for that invite. I also, through September and November, ran an election campaign where a number of different citizens and residents approached me wanting to know my thoughts. I explained to them that ethically and morally, I could not speak on the application as it was not presented to me, but there was discussion in regards to the generalization of land, excuse me, private property and also government overreach, but it was not directive, directed specifically towards this particular application. And most recently, I think it was on the 2nd of December, I received an email in my inbox from a citizen, and I opened up that email and initially read the context or body of the email and did not, did not open up the attachments as though I thought it would be provided in testimony today. So I just wanted to air out those particular moments so that if ex parte is, or the applicant feels as though that my actions need for me to make a, to, to step aside, I would be more than willing to, I just want to do what's best for this process. Thank you.
President.
I too received the email from a resident on the 2nd, and I opened it up. I did not respond or read the details that would be provided this evening.
I read the same email, I received the same email, and I did read the information. Then the next day, I got a, say we weren't supposed to do that, so I have read it, but it's pretty much all covered in the, this report that we received a week ago, so I don't think I had anything new in particular that I could think of. I did read it. Yes.
Mayor. I also received the email and read through the summary. I haven't, did not open up in the attachments, but did read through the summary. I also received the same email, however, I got the notice that we aren't to review it before I read it, so I did not read the content of the email. Thank you.
Same thing, I did receive the email and read the, read the content as well.
All right, I also received the email. I forwarded it to our city order because I, and didn't read it because I knew that it was outside of the hearing process. Also, on, uh, November 18th, received an email from former Counselor Haugen, and because I'm the only one that received it, I'll go and read it for the record. Disappointing unanimous vote at the EC last night, which is going to make it difficult for council to deny the application. This is a hell of a way to end your tenure as mayor, and unfortunately it will be your, be the legacy, good or bad, of your good efforts for the community you love. I'll be talking with our attorney soon about his rebuttal to the applicant's attorney on December 5th. Sadly, this is probably destined for lube. To soften the blow, you might consider the advice offered by a contemporary, John Bill Smith, sent the suggestion below regarding Buxton. Happy to talk if you would like for December 15th, Joel. And then the quote was, if they move forward with this project, I'd make sure that to require an adequate performance bond, payment bonds and warranty bonds, and they may want to require the developer to fund HOA and reserves for a decade and include adequate insurance coverage for the HOA. HOAs nowadays sometimes cover home insurance, like when attached townhomes are built to prevent, prevent the attached neighbor not having adequate coverage. Flood insurance rates have skyrocketed in the last few years as the feds redrew flood maps, so that might be another reason for HOA to cover because unsuspecting buyers might not adequately project flood insurance costs when buying. As interest rates skyrocket and the recession takes hold and housing prices sink, the project will make less and less sense for the developer and they will be much less inclined to be a good partner. It is what it is, it's not going to affect my impartiality on looking at the evidence. Is there anyone else? Does any party wish to challenge any counselor's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? Okay, the order of the hearing will be the staff report, then the applicant's presentation, then proponents, then opponents, then rebuttal by the applicant, then a staff response. thereafter, the hearing will be closed for consideration, by, consideration of the matter by the council. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, thank you for being here tonight, thank you to all the citizens who are here tonight as well. I have a few housekeeping items to mention before I start my staff report presentation. I just wanted to say briefly that many of the issues that have been raised to date are very similar in nature. If a person who testifies before you has already covered the same concerns, then we ask that you'd move on to an issue that has not been raised yet when it's your turn to provide testimony. As the mayor mentioned, testimony will be timed at five minutes for each person. This, in addition to not allowing repetitious testimony, is so that everyone who wishes to speak tonight can speak. Uh, let's see, Associate Planner NJ Johnson across from me will indicate when you have one minute left by raising one finger and will say when five minutes is up with a T. And then I realize those of you who are online may not be able to see him doing that, in which case he will let you know verbally when the one-minute mark is up and when the five minutes is up. And then if you have the ability to kind of just time yourself to keep, keep track of that, that's great, if not, again, we're here to help you. Again, we ask that everyone online keep themselves muted, and if anyone has called into the meeting and you've been muted, you'll press star six in order to unmute yourself. So in just a second, I'm going to turn it over to NJ. He's going to find out from the people online who wish to speak later this evening. He'll be taking your information now, so we have a complete list of people who want to speak on the matter, and it will not be right now, it will be later in the meeting when the mayor indicates it's time for public testimony. So go ahead and turn it over to NJ now.
Good evening, everyone. Speaking specifically to the online folks, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the Buxton Ranch application? If so, please use the raise hand function in the Microsoft Teams app and wait until you are called to provide your name and city for the record and indicate if you are speaking as a proponent or opponent. The raise hand function can be accessed by clicking on the reactions button and then selecting the raise hand emoticon. You can also select Ctrl, Shift, K on your keyboard at the same time. That's Ctrl, Shift, K. Joel, could I have you state your name, city, and whether you're speaking as a proponent or opponent or in neutrality?
Uh, Joel Haugen, city of Scappus, an opponent.
Thank you. Chris Kobach, could you please state your name, city, and whether you are speaking as a proponent, opponent, or in neutrality on the item?
Yes, Christopher Kobach, Portland, Oregon. I'm Mr. Haugen's attorney, and I'll be speaking in opposition.
Thank you. IH, could you please state your name, your city, and whether you are speaking as a proponent, opponent, or in neutrality on the matter?
My name is Ivan Higgins, I'm from the city of Scappus, and I'm an opponent.
Is that spelled I-V-A-N-H-I-G-G-S, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you, Ivan. Is there anyone else online? If so, please use the raise hand function now. Okay, thank you all, your names will be passed on to the mayor and he will call on your name during public testimony. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So tonight I'll be going over the council staff report very briefly, then I'll cover the observations section at the beginning of the Planning Commission's staff report. Next, I'll let you know where the relevant approval criteria are, where the findings to those criteria are located in the Planning Commission's staff report, and lastly, I'll provide staff's recommendation and the conditions of approval. So to begin, as stated in the council staff report, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this request on October 27th of this year. Written comments on the application were due by 5:00 PM on October 26th, the day before the Planning Commission hearing. And then during that first evidentiary hearing, the Planning Commission did vote to leave the record open for 10 days to allow for additional written testimony and to allow seven days after that for the applicant to provide a rebuttal statement. All of the additional written testimony received after the date the Planning Commission's staff report was released is included in the packet in front of you tonight. That additional testimony is on pages 524 through 644. When I'm referencing page numbers tonight, I'm going to be using the ones at the bottom left of the packet. It says the page number, then 12, 5, 2022 council packet. So again, the bottom left of the page will be the page numbers I'll refer to. After considering all the facts in the record, the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council, subject to the conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report dated October 20th. So moving on to the observations section in the Planning Commission's staff report, that's going to begin on page nine of the 12, 5, 2022 council packet. So if you want to, go ahead and turn to that page, I'm going to start under subject site. And this will provide an overview of the application. The subject site's approximately 17 acres, it's located south of southwest JP West Road near Captain Roger Cussera Way, with South Scappus Creek and Southwest Fourth Street to the east and Southwest Jovan Road to the west. This site is zoned low-density residential, R1, it's designated as suburban residential by the comprehensive plan. Adjacent zoning is moderate-density residential, R4, high-density residential, A1, and public lands utility, PLU, to the east, public lands recreation, PLR, to the north, and low-density residential, R1, to the west and south. The subject site consists of a single tax lot, which is currently vacant except for an old barn slash storage building, and this site has historically been used for agriculture, pasture and hay. The site slopes downhill from west to east towards South Scappus Creek, which flows northward along the eastern portion of the site. There is a small stream which flows in the southwest of the property in an easterly direction where it flows into South Scappus Creek. As you know, the site contains floodplains, wetlands, fish and riparian corridor, and a steep slope hazard areas as further described below when we get to the sensitive lands development permit setting. Under observations, again, this is a consolidated land use application. The applicant's requesting approval of seven separate applications. Typically, the Planning Commission, well, let me back up, the Planning Commission provides a recommendation to city council for the plan development application, and council is the decision authority on that application. However, while the Planning Commission normally would be the approval body for the remainder of the applications because council is deciding the plan development overlay, they will because council is deciding the plan development overlay, they will decide all of the applications. Under proposed plan development, a plan development is an overlay to the existing base zoning for one particular parcel. And so it's processed as a zone change essentially. Plan developments are generally meant for sites like this where there are natural resources to be protected. As stated in the Scappus Development Code, Chapter 17.81, "Plan developments, the purpose of this overlay is to provide more flexibility in the development of land, to encourage variety and creativity in the development pattern of the community, to conserve natural land features, to facilitate aesthetic and efficient use of open space, to create public and private open space, to encourage the application of new techniques and technology to community development which contribute to superior living or development patterns, to use land efficiently in order to reduce the cost of housing maintenance, street systems, and utility networks, to promote energy conservation and crime prevention, and to relate the development to the natural environment and its users." The applicant has stated in their narrative the goals and objectives of this planned development, and they are: "To take advantage of and protect the sensitive environmental, visual, and recreational values of South Scappus Creek and wetlands on the property, to provide a quality subdivision for single-family homes with recreational amenities for residents and the public to enjoy, to maintain floodplain storage capacity with a balanced cut fill while ensuring the home sites and adjacent properties are safe from flooding, to create usable recreational open space and enhance the overall visual and recreational quality of the development with a combination of parks and open spaces with quality landscaping, to accommodate a housing type and size that provides options for the local community, is affordable, and provides opportunities for next generations of Scappus residents, and lastly, to accommodate future development via the extension of a public street." Under sensitive lands development permits, floodplain. So as you know, portions of the site are within the 100-year floodplain, and that's associated with Scappus Creek. The existing floodplain boundary is depicted with a green dashed line in the applicant's drawings, and those start on Exhibit 4. Exhibit 4 starts on page 210 of the council packet. Recently, the applicant's consultants have obtained FEMA approval of a conditional letter of map revision, which we refer to as a CLOMER. That's included in Exhibit 9. This is FEMA's process essentially of evaluating whether the applicant's proposal, if built as planned, would meet the National Flood Insurance Program standards. The city can then rely on the CLOMER approval to authorize floodplain modifications, including site construction like grading roadways and utilities, after which the applicant then would submit their as-built drawings to FEMA. And FEMA would review that. And then again, the CLOMER is ensuring that if the subdivision is built according to the as-bills and according to the plan before you tonight, that that floodplain map would change based on what they're showing in their packet, and it would redefine the floodplain boundary. The associated proposed floodplain boundary is depicted with a blue dashed line in the applicant's drawings. The proposed site grading would expand the flood storage capacity by cutting out more material than it is filling, and this is consistent with our code requirements in Chapter 17.84. The subdivision project includes proposed fill of up to approximately 2,494 cubic yards within the floodplain, which is compensated for by a 2,503 cubic yard cut or removal of material. This would leave it with a net cut of nine cubic yards of additional floodplain storage capacity. Under wetlands, the site contains six identified wetlands. You can see those as depicted on the phasing plan. That's Exhibit 4B or page 211 in your packet. The applicant does propose some temporary activities to Wetland A. That's along the western boundary. That's for a sewer connection to an existing manhole. And also, there is some proposed grading within the riparian buffer. In addition to city-sensitive lands development approval, wetland filling and mitigation is subject to the standards issued by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of State Lands, though in this case, the wetland impacts are likely below the 50 cubic yard DSL threshold. When I say DSL, that's Department of State Lands. It's likely below that 50-yard threshold that would require the wetland fill permit. Also, Wetland A is likely not regulated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Still, though, there is a recommended condition of approval that requires that the applicant submit a no-state-permit-required letter from DSL if no permit is in fact required. Under Fish and Riparian Corridor, the site is located, again, along the South Scappus Creek. It does contain Fish and Riparian Corridor areas. The Scappus Bay Watershed Council did perform creek restoration activities in 2018 and 19 within this site and Veterans Park. That included bank laybacks to minimize active bank erosion. It provided channel capacity during high flows. They added floodplain benches to increase floodplain interaction during seasonal flood flows and side-channel reconnections to access historic off-channel areas. There is included a FEMA ESA compliance assessment technical memo as Exhibit 11, and that further explains the project restored the western bank of the creek in two areas and created inset floodplain side channels in two other areas. The applicant proposes activities within the Fish and Riparian Corridor, including a compacted gravel public pathway to provide a public amenity, construction of Eggleston Lane where it connects to JP West Road, grading, and a stormwater outfall. The applicant proposes to plant native species within the riparian corridor, extending west to the edges of the residential area. Under slope hazard areas, so portions of the site are defined as slope hazard areas under the Scappus Development Code. The applicant is seeking approval of a sensitive lands development permit for activities such as grading and installation of the water main within the slope hazard area. The geotechnical report notes that the proposed development is geotechnically feasible provided that the recommendations of the report are incorporated into the design and construction phases of the project. Therefore, the recommended conditions of approval do require that the applicant follow the recommendations of the geotechnical report. Under proposed subdivision, street system, and right-of-way dedication, again, the applicant requests approval to subdivide the 17 acres into 48 single-family residential lots. That would have a range in lot size from 3,410 square feet to 13,803, 13,083 square feet, and then seven open space tracts. The tract, tract A, would support a private park with a picnic table and overlook the wetland area in tract B. Tract B would be open space, which would include a wetland. Tract C would support a stormwater facility. Tract D would be the site of the future Greg Buxton Park and also would be the location of the public trail. Tract D would be open space. Tract F would support a wetland. And tract G would support a stormwater facility and open space. Again, tract D includes construction of a public compacted gravel trail. It starts near the intersection of JP West Road and the proposed Eggleston Lane extension, and then it would extend south from its starting point along the western edge of Scappus Creek Riparian Corridor, and then it connects back to Eggleston Lane, south of Lot 18. Tract D would also contain considerable open space and riparian plantings, which would preserve habitat and maintain water quality. The applicant requests phasing of the proposed subdivision, Phase 1 and 2, and this is for plating purposes. And so essentially, the purpose of the phasing is to allow for the Phase 1 lots, which are not currently within the mapped floodplain, for the roads and utilities to be put in, for the plat to get recorded for Phase 1 at the lot sizes shown on their plan. And then Phase 2 plat would not be recorded until after the applicant applies for and receives approval from FEMA of the letter of map revision. Again, that ensures for the city that we don't get into a situation where we have substandard lot sizes in the floodplain. The applicant is not allowed to submit their Phase 2 plat until that floodplain map has been amended. The development proposes a 10-foot dedication and half-street right-of-way improvements to southwest JP West Road to the collector's standard for approximately 600 feet. This is consistent with the city's transportation system plan requirements. The improvements include curb and gutter, 18 feet of paving to centerline, six feet sidewalk, five-and-a-half-foot planter area with street trees, streetlights, and stormwater improvements. The applicant proposes construction of a new local street, Eggleston Lane, which extends south from JP West Road and is stubbed at the south end to allow for a future roadway extension. The applicant proposes a right-of-way width of 54 feet. Eggleston Lane would be improved to meet the city's local road section, including 32 feet paved width with curb and gutter, five-foot sidewalks, a five-and-a-half-foot planter area with street trees and streetlights. The southwest Eggleston Lane right-of-way is proposed to extend to the southern boundary of the site, but the improvements are proposed to stop just north of the riparian corridor associated with the unnamed stream to minimize environmental impacts. Under traffic impact analysis, page 14, the applicant submitted a traffic impact study completed by Kittleson and Associates. That is attached as Exhibit 22. The study estimated that the proposed 48-lot development would generate 514 daily trips, of which 38 would be during the morning peak hour and 50 would be during the evening peak hour. The applicant's transportation engineer concluded that all study intersections meet their respective mobility standards and targets before and after the proposed development. Therefore, no transportation mitigation was recommended or is required. The TIS indicates that approving the zone change and plan development would be consistent with the state transportation planning rules since it would not significantly affect area roadways, and that is also found in more details in the findings for that section. Under public utility improvements, municipal water is available from an existing 12-inch water main in southwest JP West Road. The applicant proposes to extend an eight-inch water main within the southwest JP West Road to the southern paving, or I'm sorry, I should say Eggleston, within the Eggleston Road to the southern paving limits, and then to loop the existing water main in the southwest portion of the site. Water meters would be installed to serve each lot. Likewise, sanitary sewer is available via an eight-inch main in JP West Road. The applicant proposes to extend an eight-inch sewer main within the Eggleston Lane right-of-way to the southern paving limits and install laterals to serve each lot. The applicant proposes that stormwater from Buxton Ranch would be managed within two stormwater facilities to be located in tracks C and track G. The applicant has submitted a preliminary storm drainage report detailing the stormwater approach. Per the CCNRs, the Homeowners Association will maintain the stormwater facilities. Under street trees and landscaping, the development codes require street trees along all street frontages. The applicant has submitted a planting plan that's attached as Exhibit 4P. And then, as shown on the planting plan, the applicant proposes to plant a total of 66 street trees along the extension of Eggleston and then along their frontage on JP West Road. As I mentioned before, the applicant is proposing six open space tracts as part of the proposed development. All tracts are landscaped to varying degrees with a variety of vegetation, as shown on Exhibit 4P. Landscaping in Tract D, which is the future Greg Buxton Park, will consist of high grass, medium-to-dense brush with trees, dense forest with medium undergrowth, and dense forest with little undergrowth, as shown on Exhibit 4P. A variety of fencing is proposed. Again, that can be seen on the landscaping plan. So around the water quality facilities, either wood split rail or black chain link fencing is proposed. Cedar fencing with steel posts is proposed in the rear and side yards of home lots. And then lastly, a lock-and-load retaining wall system is proposed outside of floodplain areas. The applicant has included a fencing plan on that same Exhibit 4P. All required noticing for this application has been met. The City of Scappus Engineering, Public Works, Police, Building Departments, City and the City Manager were noticed, as well as Scappus Rural Fire District, Columbia County Public Works, Oregon Department of State Lands, Columbia River Pewee, Scappus Bay Watershed Council, Columbia County Soil and Water Conservation District, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. In addition to the school district, which I think got left off here, but their comment is in here, as well as the school district received copies of the proposal. Staff did not receive any objections from any of the agencies, and any comments from those entities are included in Exhibits 28 through 37. So I want to point out that the Scappus Fire District did have a comment that two private lots cannot be shared to establish a hammerhead. Their Exhibit 32. So the fire district had concerns about the turnaround being shared between two private lots. We spoke with Chief Pritchard about that, and the applicant, the applicant did volunteer to put that into a tract as opposed to an easement. It would be paved and curbed, which satisfied the fire department so that it would be clearly denoted that it was a turnaround. This, again, alleviated the concerns of the fire district, and additionally, all lots within the subdivision would be required to be sprinkled, which he's happy about. So we did obviously receive public comments on this application. Those that were received by the date of the staff report, October 20th, were included in the original Planning Commission's staff report. Everything that was received after that date, including during the open comment period, are included in Pages 524 to 644 of your packet tonight. So now I'll point out where the relevant approval criteria are located within the report. The statewide planning goal findings are found on Pages 15 through 20 of the council packet. The findings related to applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies are found on Pages 20 through 26. The criteria related to Chapter 17.22, amendments to the zoning map findings are on Pages 27 through 28. Criteria related to Chapter 17.44, R1 Low Density Residential, the findings are on Pages 30 through 31. Chapter 17.81, Plan Development Overlay, findings are on Pages 32 through 45. Chapter 17.84, Sensitive Lands Flooding, findings are on Pages 45 through 51. Chapter 17.85, Sensitive Lands Wetlands, findings are on Pages 51 through 55. Chapter 17.86, Sensitive Lands Slope Hazard, findings are on Pages 55 through 60. Chapter 17.89, Sensitive Lands Fish and Riparian Corridor, findings are on Pages 61 through 64. Chapter 17.100, Landscaping, Screening, and Fencing, findings are on Pages 64 through 66. Chapter 17.104, Street Trees, findings are on Pages 66 through 67. Chapter 17.106, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, findings are on Page 68. Chapter 17.130, Conditional Use, findings are on Pages 68 through 69. Chapter 17.150, Subdivisions, Chapter 17.150, Subdivisions, findings are on Pages 70 through 72. Chapter 17.154, Street Utility Improvement Standards, findings are on Pages 73 through 84. Lastly, Chapter 17.162, Procedures for Decision-Making Quasi-Judicial, findings are on Pages 84 through 85. So if you want to turn to Page 86 of your packet. This opens up to the start of the conditions of approval. So based on the findings of fact contained within the record and within the October 20th Planning Commission staff report, which respond to the relevant approval criteria, staff does recommend that City Council adopt Ordinance 909, thereby approving the application with the 52 recommended conditions of approval in place. Again, you can see the conditions of approval. They start on Page 86 and end on Page 93. And just for some reference, as council notes, staff always includes conditions of approval to ensure that a project is meeting the development code. A lot of the conditions here are standard for any subdivision. And then, for reference, we had a recent nine-lot subdivision that did not have any other consolidated application with it, and that staff report contained 31 conditions of approval. Again, this one at 52 conditions of approval has, again, a lot of the standard conditions we always include, but it also has specific conditions of approval related to the plan development overlay and also the sensitive lands. So that's why this list is longer than a standard subdivision. And then, back to the council staff report on Page 2 of your packet, does provide some options and the suggested motion for approval, for council's consideration. That concludes my presentation of the staff report tonight. The overview. Happy to answer any questions as we get going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Opponents, the applicant's presentation. You just step forward and state your name.
Just one moment to get it set up here, if that's all right. Great. Good evening, Mayor Burge, Council President Greason, and city councillors. My name is Garrett Stevenson. I'm here tonight on behalf of David Weekly Holmes. I hope that I'm speaking adequately into the microphone. I know I had issues with that last time. My address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900, Portland, Oregon 97204. To my left is Matt Sprague, who's our primary lead and planning consultant with Pioneer Design Group. We have tonight also pretty much our entire consultant team. We wanted to make sure that we had the right folks to answer any questions you may have that are technical or otherwise. So with that end in mind, we brought out Jack Dalton, who's here. He's our senior wetland scientist with ESA. Matt Bell, who's our transportation engineer with Kittleson Associates. Eric McCarthy, our hydrologist, and Steve Poles from David Weekly Holmes is here in the room with us tonight as well. So I'm going to start out really briefly to hopefully provide some context about what we think this project is. And what you may not understand, although I suspect some of you probably do, having been in this position for a while, but if there's any question, we have been working on this project for over three years, and I think probably closer to four. And what you have in front of you is a plan that has gone through a gauntlet of just about every stress test that we can throw at it. I want to tell you, and this is no shade on staff, in fact, I think this is a compliment, but your staff set an extraordinarily high bar for the application when we came in because, you know, we're sensitive to the concerns of the community, and, you know, frankly, we knew that this one was not going to necessarily be easy. It's not necessarily an easy property. And so your terrific staff, frustrating for us sometimes, actually required quite a bit that we were not used to. For example, when you talk about doing a hydraulic analysis and getting your clomer, for most of us that work throughout Oregon, that's something that happens after the tentative approval with conditions of approval, not before. In this case, we've actually got our clomer before the application was deemed complete. And if you look at that staff report, your planning director went through and pretty much examined every potential issue that could come up. And so I think through that sort of forging process, what you have is a really, really good application. Now, I want to be clear, not everybody is going to agree with me. This is not a popularity contest, and we certainly understand the concerns of the neighbors. But when I say good application, I mean an application that meets all of the approval criteria and that is a really good plan for this particular piece of property. This was a discussion that came up before the Planning Commission, a great deal of length. They had a very long hearing initially. They left the record open. There was a substantial amount of additional public written testimony. There was a follow-up hearing during which we provided our oral rebuttal. And what you had there was a Planning Commission that asked some very, very difficult questions, some very thoughtful questions, and I think we've answered them very well. And the Planning Commission agreed with us, and they voted unanimously to approve the project, not because they were saying, oh, we love these developers and we want to see, you know, all of Scappus develop. But the reason why they did that is because they found that the criteria were met, and I think that City Council can find the same thing. As far as the project is concerned, what you have is really a thoughtful compromise between the need to tech Scappus Creek and preserve open space and also our desires to develop the property. One of the things that we looked at is just how long the site has been in the city's residential land inventory, how long it's been zoned R1. And from what I understand, it's been zoned R1 and has been intended for single-family residential development since the city adopted its original comprehensive plan. So the city already has a longstanding policy that this property should be adopted. That doesn't mean it's easy, or, excuse me, the property should be developed. That does not mean it's easy, though. I think, I like anybody else, when I see a property that's left undeveloped for years, maybe I've walked my dog through the fields, maybe I've been down by the creek or whatever, and suddenly it looks like somebody's going to come and develop that, that has a visceral, emotional component to it, and I might not necessarily be behind that. But in terms of what the policy is of this city, city's decided that this property should be developed. It has not decided that it should be maintained as a park. If it were, we'd have a different zoning, or perhaps the city would have purchased it. But with that being said, it's not necessarily an easy site. We all understand that. And the reason, you know, to that end, the application preserves 57% of this site. 57% of the property will not be developed. It's going to be preserved as open space. It provides a public pathway that will connect up with the Veterans Park pathway across JP West Road. And then it also sets aside land for both a private park but also potentially a future public park if the city wants to go that way. We heard some concerns during the Planning Commission hearing about, well, why aren't you pushing Eggleston Lane through? When you actually look at the property and understand that we're trying to develop on the upland portion and stay away from the creek, you understand why that's the case. The idea is that we can push Eggleston Lane through to the edge of the property or as close as we can get without getting into additional wetland impacts, and then be able to build homes on either side of that. What that allows us to do is to cluster homes away from the sensitive portions of the site. You heard your planning director explain that in terms of wetland impacts, we only have one small temporary wetland impact. And I highlight that because it's an example of how reserving more than half the property for open space lets us avoid some of these natural resources that folks are concerned about, and that frankly, we're concerned about too. And so that's why we're doing a plan development. And when Lori was talking, she stated the purpose statement of the plan development overlay, and I didn't originally have that in my notes, but I think it's important to remember why we're doing this and why you're seeing this more unique type of development application. And the purpose of the overlay, I'm just quoting here briefly, is to provide more flexibility in development of land, encourage variety and creativity in the development pattern of the community, conserve natural land features, create public and private open space, and a variety of other things. And I think that that sums up what we're trying to do with our design really well. You know, and there was concerns about density here. By going through the plan development process, we're able to preserve that 57% of the site, avoid building homes in floodplain, avoid building homes near to the creek, and in return for that, what we get is a 4%, a 4% increase in density. So the maximum density, if we were to just develop in the straight R1 zone without going through this more high-level planning process, would be 46 homes. We're proposing 48. But we are allowed through this process to go up to 25% in additional density. We've not done that. We think it's a good compromise between the amount of density we could potentially get out of it versus the amount of density that makes sense, and also a strong effort to preserve the majority of the site for open space. And the other thing I would finish on before I hand it over to Matt is that, you know, the public's concerns are many with this. I think that they all sort of stem from one general impulse, concerns about flooding, and also, like any other town, folks don't want to see open space get developed, that they're used to having be open space. And I understand both of those, I understand both of those concerns, but, you know, in this case, we think it's obviously a good thing for David Weekly. We want to develop the property, but I think this also gives the city some predictability about what they're going to see out there. Once we do the project, these open spaces will be protected permanently. There's not going to be a question of another development application coming forward that might want to do something different, and on and on down the line. So we think it's time. The plan, I believe, is a good one. Planning Commission agreed with us unanimously, and we think it meets all the criteria. We hope you to approve it on that basis. And with that, I'll hand it over to Matt.
Hi, Matt Sprague with Pioneer Design Group from Portland, Oregon. You know, when you go last, everybody gets to steal your thunder, so if I repeat a few things, I apologize. But I wanted to go back to the project goals and benefits section of our application. Those included expanding the riparian vegetation areas between the creek and new development, taking advantage of and protect the sensitive environmental, visual, and recreational values of South Scappus Creek and the wetlands on the property, maintain flood storage capacity with more cut than fill, clustering the residences away from South Scappus Creek, creating several tracks to preserve open space to ensure the home sites are safe from flooding. We wanted to provide a quality subdivision for single-family homes with recreational amenities for residents and the public to enjoy. And to create usable recreational open space and enhance the overall visual, environmental, and recreational quality of the development, a combination with a combination of parks and open spaces with quality landscaping. Wanted to accommodate a housing type and size that provides options for the local community, is affordable, and provides opportunities for next generations of Scappus residents. I repeat that one, providing opportunities for next generations of Scappus residents. I know that's a concern in a lot of smaller cities around the state of Oregon, is that our kids, they go to high school, they graduate, they go off to college, and sometimes it's very difficult for them to return back to their hometown and find an affordable place to live. So that's a one benefit of this project. Wanted to also accommodate future development via extension of the public streets. And then also, if you look at the design, something wasn't mentioned is that we've designed this project in a way where it transitions from west to east with the largest lots being along the western property line to have minimal or no impact on adjacent neighbors to the west in the R1 zone, while putting the smaller lots very central to the site. So I was looking earlier today at my emails as to when I started this project. I got involved in this project, it was three years and eight months ago. At that time, I got involved with David Weekly, and we updated the design of the site, and then we took that design to the city and have been working through all of the city's code criteria to ensure that we comply with them, and the city staff has done an excellent job of helping us out with that. Now Garrett mentioned the 57% of the site being maintained in open spaces such as natural resource areas and parks. Site is 17.30 acres, and what 57% means is that 9.87 acres of the site is being preserved in open space for natural resource or parks. If you wanted to add in the water quality facilities, because essentially they are open space and provide an open space benefit, you would have 10.2 acres of the site, the actual open space, and about 7.1% of the site that's actually being developed in lots and streets. So it's a very small percentage of the site that's seeing development. Through the planning commission process, there were three primary concerns that I picked up on. One is flooding, one is traffic, and the other is riparian areas and stream health. Regards to flooding, I want to point out that there's no increase in the base flood elevation being proposed with this project. That means that the base flood elevation today can be the same elevation as is when this project is completed. It also means that properties across the creek, downstream or upstream, will see no change in the elevation of the base flood elevation. On the site itself, all of the homes are more than two feet above the base flood elevation. Their finished floors, the lowest is actually almost 2 and 1/2 feet above the base flood elevation. That puts that house more than one foot above the 500-year floodplain elevation. There's only a couple of homes that are at that lower point, which are still substantially higher than the base flood elevation and higher than 500-year floodplain. So the majority of the homes are even higher than that. In regards to traffic, the project has complied with all of the traffic requirements, as has been evidenced in the traffic study and the staff report. In addition, more than $100,000 will be generated in traffic impact fees that the city will be able to utilize for off-site improvements in other locations. Project also improved 600 lineal feet along JP West Road, increasing capacity and safety along that stretch of roadway. In regards to riparian areas, stormwater is being treated and detained before a measured release into the drainage system. The project is actually detaining the 100-year storm event, which exceeds all city standards requirements. Be planting and replanting large areas between the development and the creek itself. Where that planting is actually resulting to converting over 1.75 acres from pasture to planted riparian habitat. So we're increasing the value of the habitat along South Scappus Creek in concert with protecting those lands. No wetlands are being removed. Public pathways proposed for all members of the public. That pathway essentially expands the existing system in the park and provides greater opportunity for more recreation for the public. Then all resource track development rights are being given to the City of Scappus. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just a shameless plug for the council here. I want to remind you, we've got our full consultant team, so if you have questions about traffic, if you have questions about flooding or about wetlands, we've got the folks here that can answer those questions, so feel free.
I have a question about traffic. I've had a lot of people living in those 46 homes there, and be a lot of kids, there's a park across the street, those kids are going to be running across the street to get to the park. Any plan to mitigate that possibly being a problem?
Sure. Thank you for that question, Councilor McHugh. I've got Matt Bell with Kittleson, who did our traffic impact study, and I'm going to defer to him, but before turning it over, I think what you heard staff say is that when we looked at the traffic impacts here, we didn't find that there was any problem cause that would require specific mitigation, but I'm going to let Matt explain a little bit more what that means from a traffic analysis standpoint.
Good evening. A little under the weather today, but to answer your question, I'd say that we did look at the traffic, we looked at the crash history along the corridor. We looked at, like, within the last five to seven years of data, we're not necessarily seeing any sort of trends and patterns in the types of crashes that we might require mitigation, particularly along JP West Road. And I would just reiterate that what Matt said earlier about frontage improvements along both the site frontage as well as extending further. along, both the site frontage as well as extending further, providing those types of amenities that like sidewalks and landscaping and whatnot.
Yeah, I would, I would add that, you know, we're essentially creating a four-way intersection. We're adding two more ADA ramps at the south side. So now we're creating an actual pedestrian crossing location that doesn't exist today to go along with the new sidewalk that we'll put on JP West. So it should improve safety.
I don't want to spend more time on this, but I have concerns about kids crossing the street.
Matt, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. Kind of, you mentioned, first of all, thank you for your presentation and thank you for putting on the record that, that you guys will have, will keep 57% open and that you will not go beyond the 48 housing development. That's what I heard. So my question is, the base flood elevation, you said it will stay the same, and definitely there would be two locations for water treatments to control that. But for how long do those systems last? And, and I know I see that the homeowners association will keep maintenance of those machines, I'm not sure of the system. And who will, I guess, my question is, how long would that stay? Or how long would that, those system work and keep that water base elevation where it should be? And, and who would be regulating that?
So I'm gonna pass the mic over to folks who have more technical knowledge than I do, but I just wanted to make one clarifying question. It sounds like your question, Counselor, is about the stormwater detention and treatment facilities and how long those would be maintained by the HOA. And I can tell you that the answer to that is permanently. And who is responsible for maintenance? How do we assure that? One thing you, in your question, you did ask though is about the base flood elevation. I just want to be clear that the future maintenance plans for the stormwater infrastructure is not going to control the base flood elevation, even though we talk about that in terms of 25-year storm events and 100-year storm events. And I realize that they are similar concepts, but in this case, not exactly the same. So this did come up during the planning commission proceedings. And I think actually, your public works director had a very good answer to explain how the city ensures the viability of the HOA maintenance going forward. But in, in general terms, it means covenants on the property that provide not only oversight by the city as needed, but if the HOA is not doing what it needs to do, the city has the ability to step in, do what needs to do, and then, and then bill the HOA. But Chris, did you want to expand on that at all?
Sure. Yeah, we, we did talk about that at the last hearing. So we'll have a requirement in, in the staff reports, and I don't know what condition exactly it is, but it's a standard condition to acquire stormwater maintenance and access covenant. And there'll be, in that, in that agreement, we'll have access to the facilities and they'll be required to do maintenance and report to the city twice a year if there's any discrepancies noted in accordance with the requirements for maintenance. And I would, if, once I get that, I would give them a certain amount of time to remedy those issues. The city also does have enforcement rights for maintenance where we can, intermunicipal code, can actually maintain those facilities and then charge the, you know, charge the HOA those, for those maintenance activities.
So to clarify, the city will regulate if the HOA association is keeping up with the water storm or the, the system, basically?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we don't have, we don't have a, we, we do it, we don't have a crew that specifically goes in and checks those facilities, but we do, we do go out and monitor them. I rely on the HOAs to do the reporting that they're required to do under the agreement. When we do get those reports, we do act on them. We have in the past, we saw it, action against the Dutch Canyon HOA for lack of maintenance on their facility. They took steps to mitigate those issues. We, we do, we do follow those occasionally.
So Counselor, if you look at packet page, just that I have brought my reading glasses, 90, and then condition 33, that's all specified as far as the requirements of the homeowners association. I don't know that we have, after providing a HOA, I can't recall us ever having to go onsite, perform the work, and then bill them. We certainly have that ability, and I can only think of one instance where we had to threaten it.
We haven't ever, we haven't ever had to do the maintenance.
Yeah, my concern is because it's already a drainage issue and area, so I'm thinking that we probably would have to be on top of that. That's my assumption. And then just to follow up on a, on a comment that was said, I just want to clarify, are you, I think the, there's a difference between single housing, single residence housing, and affordable housing. So which one, and both were mentioned. So what is it the, what's the idea of, what type of housing would be on that location?
Yeah, well, to clarify, it's all single-family detached housing. It's not going through a government affordable program, but due to the size and shape of the lots and the size of the homes, they're more affordable is what I'm saying in the application.
Even with HOA fees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up with Counselor, in regards to the stormwater facility, we're not talking about a piece of mechanical equipment. We're talking about essentially a catch basin for the runoff, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Hey, I have another question. Starting the HOA, most of our HOAs are defunct, not functioning. And they still exist, but they just aren't, maybe the ones more recently are functioning. But what happens when the HOA decides they vote not to disband? And, and who's going to take care of the open spaces? Is that going to be up to the HOA to take care of? That's a lot of open space to deal with.
So I'll, I'll cover the legal aspects of this, and I might pitch it to Matt briefly. I, I do want to correct the record. It, it's, it's not the case, at least when you look at the state of Oregon, that most HOAs don't function. Most HOAs actually do function, especially the ones, to your point, Counselor, that have been set up more recently. The older HOAs were set up before the passage of what's called the Plan Community Act. Plan Community Act, I believe, was written back, I think in 94, maybe a little bit earlier, but, but not, not ancient history. And they set into place very, very strict requirements about how you fund an HOA. And so when you look at old HOAs, like, for example, my first house was built in 1924, and they had had an HOA back at that time that, of course, ceased to exist as soon as they possibly could. That's not really possible under Oregon law anymore. And there's a number of reasons for that. I won't go all the way down the rabbit hole legally. But I think what might be important to point out based on your question is that when you set up an HOA, the first, the first and principal thing you have to do is make sure that the HOA is funded adequately to take care of the infrastructure that they're in charge of doing. And that's typically done through something called a reserve study. The reserve study is done, they basically appraise and make an educated guess about how much infrastructure they need to maintain. And then that has to all be funded and go into the kitty. And that's actually typically done prior to the transition of the HOA from the developer to the neighborhood. But I also want to say that doing a, doing a project without an HOA, under Oregon stormwater rules, has become very, very difficult to do. And the reason why that is, is because it used to be, what we were all used to, really until about 20 years ago, is you would build your subdivision and you discharge all your stormwater out onto the street. It would go into the city's catch basins, it would go into the city's sewer pipes and out to the river. That's how it used to work, which is why you didn't need HOAs to maintain detention retention facilities. In the last 20 years, you know, because of Oregon stormwater rules requiring more aggressive treatment, a lot of communities throughout Oregon, I'm not, this is not the case with Scappus to my knowledge, but it's the case with a lot of them, a lot of communities have had issues with Oregon DEQ and the EPA on maintaining their National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, the NIPD's program. And what all that has, has essentially resulted in is the need to do a lot more with stormwater than we used to. And in 90% of cities in Oregon, the way you do that is through stormwater facilities that are maintained by the neighborhoods that are being constructed. And that's simply because it's not practical, I think, on a large scale for local governments to take on that infrastructure in every single case. That's why you see them typically placed into tracks, and then you have to set up the HOA, do that reserve study, figure out how much money needs to be done to fund it, and make sure that when you turn it over to the neighbors, that they've got a good plan and some financial resources in place to handle things. But I don't think, you know, this, this, you know, in looking at this particular project, the HOA piece of it is probably the least exotic part of it, because I've just, I guess I've gotten used to seeing HOAs have to be part of just about anything having to do with stormwater. And if you do anything up in Washington State, it's even more intense in this regard.
I would add that there are other reasons too that HOAs have become the norm in Oregon today, not just for stormwater, but also for open spaces. Jurisdictions nowadays either can't afford to maintain these open spaces or don't, or don't want to purchase these open spaces. When I started in this business 30 years ago, in our subdivisions, every open space was dedicated to the local jurisdiction under their ownership and maintenance. Every stormwater facility we did was dedicated to the local government or regional government or ownership and maintenance. But that's not a plan that has worked in Oregon in terms of the agency's ability to pay for those maintenance costs. And so HOAs are kind of the norm now. What, what the benefit here is, there's 48 units. The more units you have in an HOA, the higher success rates you're going to have. And 48 units is a very good number of units to have a successful operating HOA.
Counselor Miller. So this question is directed towards the applicant's legal counsel. I want to unpack the HOA aspect a little bit more. Would it be possible for the HOA, once it is turned over from the builder to the people that live there, to dissolve the HOA? Because what I'm hearing is that we are placing different conditions on the HOA, and those conditions are obviously important. So is there a mechanism in which the HOA could dissolve itself?
Um, I, so I would say that in this instance, and I'm going with my gut a little bit here because I don't have the laws right in front of me. But where you, when you were doing something, so there's, HOAs can exist for a number of reasons. Sometimes they have obligations to the public and sometimes they don't. In this case, this HOA will have obligations to the public, and the covenant will be placed on every single lot and all the resulting property that requires that HOA to remain extant. That makes sense. And so if, you know, I, I have frankly, I've not seen a whole lot of modern HOAs dissolving, especially not for, you know, a project that is, well, I, to be honest with you, I've not seen a case of.
Can I stop, can I stop you there? So what you're saying is that when they go sign their, their title documents, there's going to be restriction in those documents that say that they will be perpetually in that HOA, and that it will not dissolve, they will not seek to dissolve the HOA?
I'd have to, so I, I don't know the precise answer to your question, because I don't know what that covenant's going to look like. But from speaking with Chris, the way I understand that this is going to work because of the city's requirements and the conditions of approval, is that we will have an HOA that is required to remain in effect and required to maintain these public facilities. I don't believe, although, you know, take it with a grain of salt, I don't have the material in front of me, I don't believe that they would be able to just dissolve the HOA and walk away because there would be a covenant remaining on the property. The question, I think, that gets to your point is, all right, there's a covenant on the property, what happens then? And what would happen is that the city would be able to compel the neighbors in the HOA to do what they're supposed to do. That's, you know, there's, there's, there's a question of, all right, what if they do something and you don't like it? Well, what's the end result? The end result is an enforcement issue.
I mean, I'm looking from it, looking at it from, you know, we're, we're placing all these rules and these, we'll call them securities, into the HOA. But it would seem to me that we need to make sure that the HOA can't dissolve and the HOA is always going to be there, otherwise these promises and these securities, as I call them, are rather pointless.
They're not pointless because the covenants with the city are what maintains the existence of the HOA if folks don't like it.
If that's the case.
That is the case. So I can tell you, in concept, the obligations to the cities will be covenants on the property. They can't stop maintaining it, dissolve the HOA, and walk away.
What I'm hearing is there's no dissolution of the HOA allowed, it's a perpetual HOA.
Yeah, that would be the case. The only thing I could say, see changing is if for some reason the city came in and took over, and who knows what happens years down the line? But if for some reason the city came in and took over all the infrastructure and said, we're going to maintain this now, at that point, the HOA would no longer be obligated to maintain those facilities. They may still need to exist for a number of other reasons. But right now, primary obligation that we've been talking about is the obligation to maintain the public facilities that serve the project. And those obligations are going to be insured with conditions of approval that will result in essentially covenants on title. They're very, very common. This is how every single HOA that maintains stormwater works. And, you know, I, I don't think that they would be able to just summarily dissolve it and walk away.
So let me ask you a follow-up question of that then. Okay, so if there's a covenants on the title, then let's hypothetically say the HOA could dissolve. So then whose responsibility does it become to maintain things like the, the stormwater? If, if there's that covenant on the title? I don't, I'm not trying to get too much in the weeds here, I'm sorry, but they, they're important things.
Yeah, I, and I, I want to be careful here because I, I don't want to opine on HOA documents that haven't been drafted yet.
Eric, could I?
Yeah, you can jump in here.
And Peter here, there is a section.
If you look at page 91, your packet, and.
Just 91, yeah.
Yeah, just 91. So we, they are, you would be required to sign off on dissolution of their HOA. So they could not do it without the city's permission. And obviously, I mean, I can't speak to what a future council would do. It would seem very, very unlikely. Then the other thing that we, we've required, it's kind of adjacent to this issue, is a non-remontance agreement for an LID. So if we were, which is a local improvement district, which would be necessary to construct, what have you. So one of the comments that we got in front of the planning commission is, why aren't we taking the street to the edge of the property? And there are reasons that are site-specific to this site that we're not doing it. But in the event that we're going to, that is not, what is it? It's not on our TSP necessarily, but it's.
It is on our TSP.
Yeah. Yeah, so in the event that the development happens on the other, on adjacent parcels, and we form an LID, none of the property owners will be able to object. So what we'd start out is with, you know, however many, it's 48 lots, right? Well, we've started as 48 property owners who are not objecting to a local improvement.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the city, again, I'm not trying to take too much time on this, but what I'm hearing is the city would be quite, everything that we got going on right now, the city would be required to sign off on that, and the HOA in of itself could not unilaterally dissolve itself.
Correct. And I just want to read Counselor Miller specifically from the condition of approval. It's in relation to the CCNRs. It requires city signature prior to recording at Columbia County, meaning we're, we're looking it over before it gets recorded. And then they have to specify that the CCNRs may not be amended without. And then they have to specify that the CCNRs may not be amended without the written consent of the city for issues that impact the right-of-way stormwater or open space tracks and any other issues relevant to the city. So we have thought of this and we did include this so that we can look at that and specifically prevent some weird situation like that from happening.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Those are really good questions to ask, and frankly, there are things that when you do this work, you are just routine, you don't think all that much about, but I, I appreciate the questions because I think it is important every now and then to stop and look and say, hey, how does this actually work? But I think in this instance, it's, it's exactly like every other subdivision that I've worked on that has an HOA obligation. And the process, just, just in terms of drafting, so you know, the way this works is that we will go back, we will draft a set of HOAs, bylaws and so forth, we will then submit that to the city, they will look over it to make sure that the obligations they're requiring are in those documents, and those documents get recorded on title for, for each of the lots. So I hope that's an adequate explanation, but I, I do appreciate the questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Is it accurate to say that that draft is already in our packet as listed in Exhibit A, bylaws of Buxton Ranch Home Association?
There you go.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, but I'm trying to find the page. I know. This is for your wetlands expert. Do you mind just introducing yourself?
Jack Dalton with Environmental Science and Assessment, based in Portland, Oregon.
Thanks, Jack. There were some comments provided by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. They had the opportunity to make some comments back. I can read them, they're here on page 472. I assume since this is your sweet spot, you're aware of the concerns that they had, and I just, on the record, would like you to share with us either how you're incorporating their recommendations or how you're addressing their concerns.
Well, our, the, the whole process dealing with ODFW was through the FEMA process, excuse me, and that was to meet a local requirement for the local Department of Fish and Wildlife to ask specific questions about the habitat on site. So that, so they basically, we walked the site with them, we talked about where the riparian was, where the limits of the project were, and then they wrote up their recommendations, and then we basically, through the FEMA process, looked through the, you know, worked with the design team to, to kind of lay out how all that meets. Now, some of the specific criteria about stormwater, that's outside of my area, but we basically went through all of that stuff, and one of the main concerns that they had was the health of the creek is to be maintained by having a higher density riparian cover. And the way it was currently used, like we were talking about, like an acre and, you know, acre and three quarters was just pasture right up to the bank, all, the project allows us to expand that area, and they, we went beyond the minimum 50-foot buffer that the city would require, and we went all the way to the limits of the development. So that was one, one of the main aspects that they are concerned with, with, you know, water quality, water temperature in the creek, all of that. And then the technical side of it about the stormwater, engineers can answer that question for you, but that was, that's how that all got implemented.
Can you just restate the amount of feet? Our requirement is 50, you said you went up to farther. Can you say what?
Yes. In some areas, the development is right at 50, just because of the contours of the site.
Sure.
Some of the others, it's easily twice that, so it, it kind of varies as you go. But the other piece of it that we did initially was we looked, we actually mapped where the restoration work, work had already been done, and we assured that that wasn't being impacted by the development as well. So it was, we were very careful step by step to measure out all this stuff and get it mapped. I'm not sure if, is there a average width there that we?
There's not really an average because the line is not straight.
Sure.
But there are locations where the riparian corridor has probably more than doubled 50-foot width, and then areas where it's just at, right at 50 feet.
I have a follow-up question, it might be for Chris or Lori. Do they directly work with, like, the little, local watershed council to, I mean, they've already done some work along the creek, so how do they know how to either continue that or not? You know, what does that process look like? Or is it just, they've got the experts and they?
We, we do usually ask them to coordinate with Columbia Soil Water Conservation District because they know the area really well, and we look for those, we look for any anomalies and, and, you know, try to have them, because I'll consult for no cost with, on projects. So we do get them involved, we've done it before, we did it at the Commerce Center, for instance, to get their opinion on, on those designs. So I don't know that we've stated in the staff report that that's what we are going to do, but that's typically what we would do.
And I would say too, just that West Consultants who did the hydrology study, it's, it's going to be, frankly, their recommendations as far as the plantings, because they did the modeling for the revised floodplain, and my understanding is that they're, they have to match the roughness of the plants that's in their model, and so they're going to choose plants that are specific for, for that purpose. I don't know if the applicant has any additional.
Yeah, I would just add in that, that we did have the mapping for the program that they completed south of JP West Road.
Correct.
And there are very few areas where there's any conflict at all with what their plantings are and what ours are. Their plantings are primarily right along the edge of the creek itself, where our riparian corridor is much farther west of that. So most of the new plantings you'll see out there are brand new and won't conflict with what was already done by watershed council.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up on that, it's, right after they installed that, we actually GPSed that line, so that line is on a map, and so then that all gets fed into the landscape plan that was part of.
And follow-up, those are native species plantings that would be installed, so there's, you know, more drought tolerant, less maintenance associated to it, help with our pollinators, those types of things.
That's correct, and we also vary the landscape throughout, so it's not just all forested area, you know, it's grasslands and forested areas intermixed, so there's a lot of variety there.
Would you be willing to consult with the Scapoose Bay Watershed because they have done work all, already along South Scapoose Creek? Is that something that you would entertain in the development of the riparian of that particular, particular portion of the property?
To a degree, we could do that. We have very specific, in the hydraulic study, we have very specific plantings that we're doing in that area, and they have a very specific amount of roughness which controls the flow of the stormwater. But that's something, we can reach out to them, and if they have a like recommendation for a similar planting material that they would prefer, then we can alternate our plans to accommodate that.
Anything in the spirit of community building?
Mm-hmm.
Good opportunity. Thank you. Any other questions?
Who's the experts that we haven't talked to and what do they do? Again?
So I think the last person you may want to talk to is Eric McCarthy, who's our hydrologist. If you've got questions on the floodplain issues, he's sitting right here, bring him up if you want to.
We also have Mr. Brent Pritch, who is the project civil engineer.
Want to talk to the hydrologist.
Thought you might.
All right. Any questions about flooding?
I attended both of the planning commission meetings, so I have heard and read a lot of the information that's been received by the people behind you. I think that this application has definitely gained some traction since that time, and so I would just appreciate if, just for clarification for the record, it is without a doubt apparent that that flood, that field currently floods. And I would just like to hear from you how that will change based upon what you have designed here.
Yeah, yeah, good question. So, no, just to back up a little bit.
Take your time.
Yeah, so, you know, both FEMA and the city regulate development within a floodplain. FEMA allows development to occur within a floodplain as long as it doesn't increase that base flood elevation by more than one foot. Now, the city understands that, you know, this is a very sensitive area, a lot of historic flooding is known to occur over here. So proactively, the city exceeded FEMA's requirements and basically said that there could be no increase in the base flood elevation because of this project.
Can you say that one more time?
Yeah, so there's no increase in the base flood elevation because of this project. Now, that's based on a hydraulic analysis that we developed as licensed engineers that analyze both the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, compare the water surface elevations to ensure that there was no increase to .00 feet. So that's known as a no-rise condition, and honestly, that's pretty strict requirement. You know, often when we do a lot of these type of projects, analyze the impact, you know, people, you know, different municipalities try to just match FEMA's minimum requirements of allowing up to one foot of increase in the water surface elevation. However, with this project, the city, you know, exceeded that, you know, had very strict requirements about there being no increase in the water surface elevation. That combined with the cut and fill balance requirements, basically ensuring that, you know, any fill, any dirt that's placed within the floodplain is offset with, with cuts from the 100-year floodplain, so that there's no net decrease in storage in the 100-year floodplain.
Can I stop you?
Sure.
Kristen, Lori, is that unique to this application or every application that sits, it's our requirement that they not? Can you?
Every application, it's in our development code, and we do have higher than the NFIP minimum standards in our floodplain development code.
Thank you.
And our code has been reviewed by the LCD, specifically the woman.
NFIP.
So we've, this has been going on for three years and eight months, and has, as they said, it's not been an easy journey.
I just want to reiterate that we really put you through the wringer here, that's what I'm trying to get at, and I want to thank our staff for trying to maintain the integrity of, okay, thank you, go ahead.
Any other questions?
Is that all you have?
Uh, let's see, yeah, you know, basically, as the hydraulic engineers, it was our job just to make sure that the project was in compliance with both FEMA and city standards. So, yeah, you know, it was an iterative process of working with the, the project engineers where they would have a certain proposed project layout, proposed grading, we would test it out, it wouldn't quite meet it, and so we would, you know, go back and suggest that they change something here or there, change the vegetation planting, so that ultimately can meet these very strict requirements.
Phase two still hasn't been approved by FEMA, right?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
Phase two has not been approved by FEMA, whatever.
Phase two has been approved via the CLOMER process, and if, the only reason that we wouldn't be plating phase two early on is because we have a, a follow-up mapping procedure to go through. So phase two will be 100% out of the floodplain when phase one records. We have a responsibility to update the mapping through a letter of map revision process with FEMA for the city will allow the plat to record.
These are all properties that are in the flood zone, right?
They're currently in the flood zone and will be out of the flood zone after construction.
Mr. Mayor. And so that, when that comes back from phase two for that conditional approval from FEMA, that then goes to the city, and the city needs to see that approval before it would move forward?
That's correct, oh, sorry.
That's good.
That's correct. So we have a condition of approval that states that they cannot even apply for their phase two final plat approval until the letter of map revision has been approved by FEMA and the floodplain maps have essentially been changed.
So essentially, the city is taking an extra step. Most jurisdictions, we would be able to record the plat and move forward with the project because the work was completed, follow up with our letter of map revision with FEMA. The city is taking an extra step to ensure that that letter of map revision is 100% complete for phase two.
Did I hear you correctly that no homes will be in the floodplain?
That's correct.
And so does that mean that the homeowners will not need to carry flood insurance?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I, I have a question about that. So when you say that no homes will be, when you say that no homes will be in the floodplain, does that mean that their floor is not in the floodplain, or what, what exactly does that mean? Does that mean none of the parcel, none of the lot is in the floodplain?
You know, I might have Brent come up and talk a little bit about whether we have any portion of any lot that contains part of the floodplain, but I, but all finished floors will be more than two feet above the floodplain elevation.
Brent Fitch, Pioneer Design Group, civil engineer on the project. Speak in the microphone. So the, the question I would, I heard was, is any portion of the lot going to be in the floodplain? You follow along the boundary of the project on the eastern edge adjacent to Scapoose Creek, see that there's a retaining wall there, it's a rockery wall, that floodplain, it sits adjacent to the bottom of that or along that face of that wall. As you come up that wall, you exceed the elevation of the floodplain. Lots are inside that wall, behind the wall.
So with that.
Lots will be outside, the lots will be outside of the floodplain.
But with that wall there, that's not increasing the elevation of the lot, the land there?
Yes, the, the wall's there to increase the elevation of the property.
Okay, okay, I understand.
So the, that no part of any of the lots.
Thank you.
That's correct, if you look at sheet two, the preliminary plat within your application, Brent was pointing out the blue dashed line, which is the revised floodplain boundary line, and you can see that that floodplain boundary line does not go on to any of the proposed lots.
Thank you.
I think you've heard from everybody, but I'm happy to bring other folks back.
We don't have any more questions, we can go ahead and move forward. Go ahead and move forward to the next question.
Mr. Mayor.
Which would be, uh, before we start the, the rest of the public here, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break, go use the restroom, we'll be back in five minutes.
We'll be back in five minutes.
So, in comparison, the drainage district totals only ninety-five hundred acres with an upland drainage area of about twenty-seven hundred acres. If you do the math, which we have, this is only about fifteen percent of the Buxton Ranch upland drainage basin. Number four, the Buxton Ranch proposal PUD overlay is not compatible with the underlying R1 zoning, which requires six thousand square feet and twenty thousand square feet minimum lot sizes in the existing floodplain. The average lot size for the adjacent nineteen properties in the underlying R1 zone is roughly thirty-three thousand square feet, with the smallest lot size being approximately eight thousand square feet. The Buxton Ranch proposes forty-eight lots with an average lot size of roughly forty-nine hundred square feet, and with some as small as thirty-four hundred square feet. Of the proposed lots, thirty-seven of those will be under four thousand square feet lot size. Number five, an approved Buxton Ranch development and ordinance nine oh nine could unnecessarily open the city of Scappus to future litigation and associated harms. My home sits directly above this seventeen acre field that is the subject of this application. I've lived there twenty-four years. From my bird's eye view back deck, I have witnessed dozens, actually countless flooding events, so much so that I stopped taking pictures or video because the flooding has become so commonplace. I urge you to deny this application as currently proposed, or at least add conditions to protect the long-term livability of our city and its homeowners. You are free to choose, but you are not free from the consequences of your choice. Just because you can do this doesn't mean you should. No reasonable person in this room can go home tonight and sleep well by believing this plan is a good idea. It doesn't matter how much money has been thrown at it, it doesn't matter how many experts have weighed in, and it doesn't matter how many voices have piped in with, "Oh yeah, it looks okay to us." At the end of it all, it is still a flawed plan. Thank you.
Next is, uh, Carol Barker. She's left. Shannon Hubler.
Hello, Shannon Hubler in Scappus, and thanks, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to provide public comment. Uh, I have a whole lot of stuff written up here, but every time I come into these things, I learn a whole bunch of stuff. I'm a professional stream ecologist. I've seen firsthand the ecological consequences of what happens when we build construction projects and we don't consider all the factors. What I can see, everything that's required here, I mean, I guess I'm, again, I'm learning about this. Base flood is what we're talking about, right? The one-hundred-year flood? That's what we're talking about. All the homes on the west side in this development will be above that base flood. That's fine. I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. What happens when they put a wall in there and they take away that floodplain storage for floods above five hundred, or sorry, above a one hundred? Right? When you get a five-hundred-year flood, it would spill out to the west. Where's it gonna go when you put a wall in there? If you live on the east side, raise your hands. It's going into their homes. It's going downstream, right? Have they provided any information about what the flooding will be above a one-hundred-year level? I haven't seen any. That's what it comes down to, right? These, these people are gonna have to leave their homes when you get a big flood. I mean, that's the least of their worries at that point. Before you, before you really do this, I strongly encourage you to read a recent story that was published in The Columbian titled "Megastorms Are Coming to the Pacific Northwest." It's also carried by The Oregonian. It's a few things from this story. Destructive atmospheric rivers or storms are expected to be two to three and a half times more frequent in the coming years. What's the one-hundred-year flood today is nothing compared to what it's supposed to be in the future. Up to forty percent or more increase in flood stage size for the one-hundred-year flood. In other words, flood risks are going to increase dramatically without floodplain development. If we do more, it's gonna get worse. What it comes down to, look to Veronia, it's in our backyard, they had three five-hundred-year floods since nineteen ninety-six. Only gonna get worse. Put a wall in there and see what happens to the homes in the floodplain already on the east side. It's not gonna be good. All these new homes are gonna be protected. Good for them, I guess. No good for everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jennifer Hancock.
It's hilarious, thank you. Mind if I stand up? I'm short.
If you could use this mic, it's a little bit better for the folks online. Answer your question, it doesn't matter whether you sit or stand, as long as you have the microphone right next to your mouth. Thank you.
Think better, I can see.
Yeah, just hold your, hold your. Hold the microphone up to your mouth. There you go. Yep, there you go.
Microphone, you need it.
I'd like to talk about the fire department's answer. Concerned about whether people are gonna be parking on both sides of the street.
Make sure that.
If people are parked on both sides of the street, now picture this, you got, um, the fire truck comes in, it's just one. They always come with another one, a tanker or something to fill up, and a fire and rescue vehicle, and probably an ambulance. So then you've got a fire, maybe it's outside the house, and it's picking up, and the sprinklers inside the house don't touch it, and you've got four vehicles, fire vehicles trying to get in there, and you've got people tearing out, trying to evacuate. Where is that fire gonna go? Air swirls down there, it's gonna go right up the hill, above Jobin Lane, hit all those houses, it's gonna take in those trees, and it'll end up on Keys Road, just like that. So that's one issue. Um, the other night, meeting Buxton said that he was only gonna build one and a half feet, uh, the floor level would be one and a half feet. Everybody says it's supposed to be two. I heard it, so I don't know if he's reliable or not. There was, at the, at the commissioners' meeting, they had four questions. Among them all, there were another two, I think there were questions, but mostly she just read the state, you know, the ordinances and the laws and whatnot. Evidently, the agencies that you sent letters to, all of those answers, none of the answers were in the packet that the commissioners had, so they could not refer to them, and they asked, I think it was you, Lori, and you said, "Oh yeah, we sent out the letters and we didn't get any response," or at least we didn't get any negative response. However, I got the letters, which the commissioners didn't have. There were twelve letters sent out, two with no objections, eight with concerns. One was a preliminary, and it was incomplete, and one opposed. So the one in question is the letter to Oxbow, which is a whole other issue. That was the one attached to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Well, the Fish and Wildlife seemed to answer back, but it was a preliminary concern, it was a preliminary. It's not a final answer, and it was dated, they're back in, uh, eighteen. So, uh, their concern, this is a preliminary jurisdictional determination and is advisory The, uh, Scappus Bay watershed council agreed with the Fish and Wildlife. So that's, uh, it's just sloppy, in my opinion. There's no date on the response, it might have just been a random document printed off the website, it's not an actual signed response. On for fire is quite concerning. I just find it.
Orders the school district.
See, he didn't clear. Fire marshal, there's no letter from the city attached, so I don't know when they got it. It is dated nine twenty-nine after the date. They're concerned that it's a dead end, concerned about flag lots, they're concerned about turnaround, and if you have to have fire sprinklers inside your house, that means to me that the fire department does not feel comfortable.
Sure.
Putting out fires.
Okay, your five minutes is up. Thank you very much. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peggy Tate.
I live at three-three-one-six-three Southwest JP West Road. Uh, I've lived there thirty-two years, um, been a witness to the creek, property, the park, everything. I am, okay, I heard them say about an intersection on JP West. My house is a house that is right next to the park and the one-stop sign. So if they make an intersection there, or stop or whatever, we're never getting out of our driveways, and the park is full, you can't imagine the traffic, when the baseball games and the people from Portland and all over come, there is so much traffic. And as far as with JP West, they're six feet, or is it six feet they're gonna do concrete or whatever? I, I just, JP West needs to have infrastructure, but there's no place for it, and that's the whole point of it. And everybody seems to think that, you know, "Oh, you don't, you people don't want us here 'cause you wanna..." No, you know what? You can have a beautiful, small town. To have to, and I don't mean this, don't take this wrong, you gotta use your brain. Common sense, common sense of watching that place flood, thirty-two flipping, one time we got a rowboat, we had to use to get out of the house. This, this is common, commonplace, sometimes during the rainy season, you know, two times, three times a month. The bathrooms in the park, whenever the water goes up, they flood. It's, it's all just big mush. And I would also like to bring up, I would hope that they would have, I don't know, money or bond or whatever in place, um, and I'm saying this from experience, 'cause my house is a damaged house from the park. I have a cracked foundation from this, in the ground, how they're gonna pack gravel. My sheet rock screws are out, I lost my gutters, I lost my flower beds, and, uh, I also had my concrete crack. So if this is gonna go on this time, and, and, not to be rude, but the answer to me, I got a lawyer, and she went to them, they covered a, I even lost a whole tree. But the whole, the whole point is, people don't want that to happen to their houses, and they have to be very, I think the builders should have to be responsible to make whole again, but their project screwed up. And I don't think it's the city's responsibility, and as far as the HOA goes, if they'd screw up, that's not your responsibility either. You work for us. You don't work for, you know, an HOA or whatever. But anyhow, I'm rambling. But anyhow, um, it, it really is a hard call, because when they're saying five hundred something trips a day, dear God, come sit at my house and have coffee, okay? In the morning at seven o'clock, in the afternoon at three-thirty, and still going on by seven-thirty at night. So, there's a whole lot, I don't know where they did their traffic study, but there's a whole lot. But I thank y'all for taking the time and your time, and please make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Hancock.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for your service to the community. Respect it, and in the interest of not being redundant, I totally endorse what I've heard from some of the people who have spoken just before me, and I am therefore going to just limit my comments to that. Thank you for hearing us. I strongly suggest that you take patience and really consider this thing. It's huge, it's enormous. One of the things I think that we don't stop and think about, because in America, everything is big, bigger is better. No, it's not. We have a beautiful little city here. Fact that it's so beautiful and so desirable is 'cause it's small, and we don't just go in leaps and bounds, we have grown smartly, healthily, and I would encourage you to consider that as you make your decisions tonight. With that, thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, hopefully it's not.
Welcome back to the Parks Committee.
Hopefully it's not like Freddy Krueger. Dave Powers, thirty-four oh seventeen Slavens Road, Warren, Oregon. I've lived in Columbia County for almost thirty years. I moved to Creekview when I first came here, so I lived right on Scappus Creek and saw zoning rules change that allowed houses developed behind neighbors who had letters saying no development behind my house. That's why I got involved in the watershed council. I've got forty years of experience with water quality and fisheries and habitat, and this proposal, I, I strongly encourage you to either disapprove the tentative subdivision or at least delay the decision until you have more adequate information. And the reason I say that is, um, I've studied this watershed extensively, I've lived on the creek, I know that the function of the creek is not just a function of cut and fill. So low elevation, creek, meanders, cuts back and forth across the floodplain, and you place infrastructure or hard walls or riprap, bounces the energy of the stream over to the other bank. In addition to that, this watershed feeds into Scappus Bay, which the level of that bay is determined largely by flows from the Columbia River and Multnomah, I mean, excuse me, the Willamette River, Multnomah Channel. And when spring runoff and high flows, and as was mentioned earlier, increasing level and intensity of atmospheric events happen, that backs up flow. No amount of cut and fill is gonna change that. In addition to that, um, when I hear that, I apologize for not being in on the first rounds, but I've been gone for three years. Second day back, box is in the house, but this was important enough, I felt, to come and at least share knowledge of the watershed and the importance of having additional analysis beyond just this much is cut and this much is filled. In addition to that, raising houses above a hundred-year flood is kinda like trying to get sauce out of Tabasco. You've got a little opening, if you look at the floodplain on this map, we're losing floodplain. That floodplain is critical, the salmonids that utilize Scappus Creek. It captures flows, it releases flows back into the river in a way that won't be done like the detention basins. Had good advice from other folks here on bonding and other requirements, because I encourage you to look at some HOA horror stories and figure out whether or not that's really a good approach for the city. I also encourage you to think about the criteria you have. Criteria you have, it says you have to have an adequate factual basis for, for the decisions and actions you make. They may have met the FEMA and core modeling requirements, but no offense to managers, and I, and I love Chris, so that's, but junk in, junk out. Shouldn't say junk, because some of that information was good information, but they certainly didn't have the full information of the flows that Scappus Creek is going into and the top of Scappus Creek watershed. I guess, uh, you know, we put well over a million dollars into watershed improvements, and it just pains me to see the city thinking about making a decision that allows this, particularly the phase-two development in the floodplain. Thank you. Um, yeah, I, again, appreciate job you do, I know what it's like to volunteer and take abuse, but, uh, what I would say is, you do have it within your power to either delay or disapprove. In addition to that, you can't unfry an egg. When you start making decisions that bind the city to problematic issues with flooding and damage from this creek, it's gonna bounce back and forth across, uh, the floodplain, you're gonna have an angrier crowd than you've got here, and I'm not angry at you, I like y'all. That's it.
Thank you.
Dave. All right, Stephen Collard.
My name is Steve Collard, I live on Ivy Drive here in Scappus. Uh, I've lived here for twenty-seven years, and, uh, this is the second go-around for development in this area, and I'm still scratching my head as to why it was ever zoned an area that could be built on to begin with. You know, I think back in the day, maybe somebody had a, a thought that it could be safe to build there, but I think we've seen, I've seen over twenty-seven years, basically a lake out there every year. And the gentleman just commented on is absolutely true, this, this stream wanders, it bounces, it erodes, it finds new ways, and that whole area out there is just a giant buffer, and that's what it's meant to be. And getting back to original zoning, maybe people weren't looking further enough into the future, but I think it's a good time to start looking into the future, because our world is changing, and I think everybody can attest to that. Climate change is real, it's here. Can't predict everything, and my basic knowledge from what I've learned in, in studying these hydrologies, studies, and looking at FEMA's, um, basic requirements, and looking at what is probably really coming and the size of the Scappus watershed, it doesn't add up to me, and I'm not a hydrologist, you know, I'm a retired salesman, but one thing I do see is a problem with the underlying foundation for this whole idea of building in a floodplain and moving the dirt around so it's no longer a floodplain, is that the hydrology, the basis for it all, could be flawed, it could be in error. And if that's true, then everything that's being built upon from that point forward is also in error. It doesn't matter about the HOAs or who's gonna be litigating against whom. If it shouldn't be built, it shouldn't be built. So my, my main concern is, is that, is people are gonna be literally underwater, there's gonna be litigation, there's gonna be housing issues, there's gonna be housing pricing issues, there's gonna be all kinds of chaos after this thing goes up, and not only, not only that, but the first half of it can start, but it can't even be approved all the way for the rest of the houses until FEMA says, "Okay, it's fine." And how does that get determined? Based on what information? You know, I ask you, is, is the underlying foundation for this sound in terms of water? And the amount of water that's predicted in this area to come, not what's past, which is bad enough, what's to come? And did the city, I mean, the applicant employed hydrologist, did the city employ a hydrologist to take apart the findings? I don't know, that's a question I do not have the answer for, but I'm asking. So, you know, I would, I would urge the council to pass on this. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good idea, and I would urge you to make that decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marissa Jacobs.
Good evening, Council, hope you're doing well. Marissa Jacobs, Scappus, I'm speaking to you as a planning commissioner tonight. For the record, I did attend the first session, for the second session, I was unable to attend, I was excused due to travel. I did since listen to the second session, and I want to offer my thoughts to council. First, um, just like you, we received a binder that was over five hundred pages with seven days to read it. If you listened to the session, you had many of my planning commissioners very concerned that this was a significant amount of material to get through within seven days when we had many, many questions. Unfortunately, not a lot of questions were asked, but there was a lot of dialogue after the decision was made, which was concerning to me, watching that session. Secondarily, I was very disappointed that there was a lack of discussion, um, within the, within the session, once the hearing closed. If I was able to attend, I would have made the following, uh, arguments to my planning commissioners for consideration. One, we should be challenging, um, we should be considering, um, how FEMA has been already challenged. In 2020, an Ecological Rights Foundation filed a lawsuit against FEMA in six counties in Southern California citing that FEMA causes, facilitates, influences, promotes, and encourages development in floodplains that harms federally, uh, species and their habitats. We have made a commitment to protecting our, uh, riparian area, ensuring that the salmon are able to do their thing. I'm not into fish, so that's the summary you're gonna get from me. But I would challenge, I would have challenged us to talk through that. FEMA is and has made mistakes. Climate change is real, things are getting worse, the climate is getting worse, the rains are getting heavier. These are things we should consider. Just because it was zoned R1 low density many, many years ago could mean that we made a mistake. That land, if you go back to 2017 Parks, uh, master plan, that land was earmarked as a potential place to develop a park. But it zoned R1 low density. We have many different master plans that do not talk to each other, we do not have one comprehensive master plan for this city. That is something that has always concerned me for the last several years living here. But when you add these things up... these things up, I don't think, what I would have told my commissioners is that I don't know if we should be voting yes on this. I feel like there is not enough information. At a minimum, we should be adding additional bonds from the developer to protect the taxpayers and homeowners here in the city because that property will flood and there will be damage done. That local street they're building, we are going to be accountable for that. So these are things I would have brought up had I've not been traveling. I was very disappointed, but I wanted to point these out to you as a commissioner, that these are things that I would have brought up for discussion and I hope that these are things that you are going to consider moving forward. Thank you.
Paul Fedrich?
Paul Fedrich, Scappus. I live outside the city limits, as all you know. Let's talk about this unremarkable development that David Weekly Holmes is proposing. I say unremarkable because a carbon copy of this development with the same houses even is currently being built in Beaverton. This makes sense. It's complementary to the other high-density developments that are in that area. By the way, these same houses, according to your website, are going for 829. The same exact models. So just if you guys want to talk about affordability. So besides the floodplain issues in this property, David Weekly Holmes is asking for a high-density zoning change from R1 low-density residential to R1 PD. The planned development overlay outlines lot size changes that will deviate from standards of Scappus, standards that we've put together. The applicant proposes a lot size as small as 3,400 square feet, which is a reduction of over 2,600 square feet from our existing standards, which are 6,000. It's a reduction in minimum lot width, the minimum lot area, smaller front yards, smaller backyards, smaller front of garages, smaller rear yards, smaller side yards, and maximum building coverage increase from 35% per lot to 55% per lot. Forty of the 48 lots will be under the current minimum allowed size. By code, the R1 PD proposal must meet many provisions, up to including, and I quote, "the creation of a land use pattern that is complementary to the community and its identity and to the community design process." That's complementary with an E, not an I. What does complementary mean? By definition, combining it in such a way as to enhance or emphasize the qualities of another. The opposite defined as differing strikingly. Is this high-density housing development complementary to the community, its design, or identity process? No. Can this proposal be defined as differing strikingly from what we have in Scappus? Yes. There are currently no housing developments of this density at this size. This is a fact. The changes in lot sizes that David Weekly Holmes is requesting is invalid. The planning commission overlooked provision in the code, and who can blame them? You guys saw the size of that packet. But neither the planning commission nor the city staff sets policy. This falls on you guys, as you know. And since the developer has not proposed a complementary design in this proposal, you have no other choice than to deny this application. But what about David Weekly stating that they can't be profitable without at least 40 homes in this property? When a large corporation says profitable, they're really saying make a lot of money. Well, it's neither the citizens nor the council's responsibility to make sure that this corporation with over a billion dollars in yearly revenues make a lot of money on this development. Got to pay for your boys here. I have attended every meeting in the 50-year planning process. The city has spent many hours and dollars on consultants and hope that this will set a vision for the future of Scappus. Consultants spent many months reaching out to citizens, asking what makes Scappus special. Number one reply, livability and that we are not Portland or Beaverton. Visioning is set at the highest level, but the decisions that are made on a daily basis set the stage for our future. If this development is approved, it will create a domino effect for years to come. As other developments are designed, they will also propose small lots crammed on top of each other. And as it will already exist in Scappus, such proposals will indeed be complementary to others in the future. The Beaverton-ation of Scappus starts or ends here tonight. A lot has been said about this council regarding vision or lack of vision, real or perceived, but this council will be remembered for this decision. And you as individuals will be the ones answering questions from citizens from now on and into the future, future generations that could be harmed by this development. Remember, you serve to protect the citizens of this community, not out-of-town developers. Vote to deny this proposal. It is not complementary to Scappus. Thank you.
Thank you. Kalina Ackelson?
Okay. My name is Kalina Ackelson. I'm at 52356 Southwest Fourth Street. I've been there since 2016. When we first purchased the home, it was required for us to carry flood insurance on our house. We're across the creek from where this is going to be built. Within the last couple of years with the FEMA reevaluations, we are no longer required to carry that. My concern is, is if you're going to be building all of this over there, where's the water going to go? Going to go to my house? I mean, it's kind of frustrating where that's at. And since we've lived here with the major water issues that have happened, water has come up to my neighbor's house, like my neighbor's garage across the street. They, I mean, so what are you guys going to be doing to help protect current houses and current people that are already there? I mean, what's being done about that? I guess most everything that I've wanted to touch on has already been kind of touched on. The only thing I will also talk about is the traffic. I mean, I'm on the S-curve of this little tiny lane and a half at Best Road and it's, it's true. Like I'm already seeing an influx of traffic with sporting events. I mean, that road connects two major roads in town. People walk dogs. There's kids walking to and from school, little kids, big kids, whatever. And how many times have I had to see them jump off the road because there's a car flying by there and they're racing like it's Malibu Grand Prix? I mean, there have been a couple of accidents this year, including a hit-and-run. I have cameras, so I can see all of that. Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm nervous to think about the impact that it's going to have on the current community if you guys do decide to go through with this. I mean, it's, it's kind of scary. So now we're, you know, looking at different options for flood insurance on our house. I'm no longer required to carry it by my lender, which is scary. If you look at riskfactor.com, I think my house is like a nine out of 10 for flood. And that's terrifying to me. I mean, the only reason, like I said, we got this house is because the other people that were in line to get it decided to back out when they realized they did have to carry flood insurance on this place. So definitely something to think about as you guys go forward. I strongly urge you to consider all options before voting. Two cents.
Michael Hickman? Hickman. Okay. Christine Walls?
Good evening. My name is Christy Walls. I live on Jobin Lane in Scappus. I attended the planning commission meeting on November 17th. I was disappointed to hear Commissioner Bruce Shoemaker freely admit that he didn't read through all of the documentation. I recognize that the planning commission is an unpaid position, but if the members are not committed to thoroughly reading through all of the documentation, they should not be voting on it. Commissioner Bill Blank asked if there were any precedents for some of the exceptions that the new development was requesting. When staff replied that there was precedence, I was disappointed that the question ceased. There was no questions as to whether the precedents were good precedents and worth repeating. We as a community need to start learning from the mistakes that have been made. While the planning commission has approved the development from a strictly code perspective, it is up to the city council to decide if it is right for our community. It's my understanding you have legal zero obligation to approve the Buxton Farms application. This site consists of six different types of sensitive lands and the applicant is seeking approval of four sensitive lands development permits. I would understand the potential to approve this application if they were seeking approval of one sensitive lands development permit, but four exceptions is too many. Scappus needs to start developing its sensitive lands and start protecting them. City of Scappus has the opportunity to help the community grow in a meaningful way. Their transformational effect that this development will have on Scappus will change the character of the community and eliminate significant open space. Once this is gone, we will never be able to get it back. The municipalities and communities all over the nation are purchasing floodplain lands similar to this site to help mitigate rising flood levels. These are the types of lands that Scappus should be purchasing, in part to protect Scappus Creek habitat, mitigate future community flooding, and therefore help protect the citizens of the community. It's time for Scappus to invest in itself. I urge the city council to consider what the existing residents of Scappus want out of our city. Public outcry over the proposed development should be an eye-opener for the city council members. Loss of open space and natural beauty that will occur as a result of this development is not worth it to any of the citizens of Scappus that I have spoken to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Winterfarrow?
I'm sorry, I'm not a good speaker. My name is Winterfarrow. I live off Meadowbrook Drive in Scappus. I moved here in 2009 because it was a nice distance to my work and I loved the country. It reminded me of Oregon City before it became developed. Speaking of Oregon City, I see Scappus going down the same path as Oregon City back in the late 1990s, early 2000s. Oregon City became very, very developed with housing, which caused a huge drawback to it. One of the reasons why I don't live in Oregon City. My grandfather had a bird refuge right off of Highway 213. It was a place for lots of local wildlife to come. It was considered a wetland. It still is to this day. The thing that gets me with seeing this is the habitat because I watched my grandfather's bird refuge, which had ospreys coming to migrate there. It had Canadian geese. It had wood ducks. It had a whole bunch of different migrating birds that would come there, lay their nests and take off. That is no longer, and the reason why that is no longer is because the stream that fed into my grandfather's pond was along Caulfield Road in Oregon City. Caulfield Road had three housing developments put up over a span of about five years. What happened was all the sediment from the buildings was washed into the stream, outwet and fed the pond. That stopped all the birds from coming. That stopped the osprey because there were no more fish in the pond because sediment had killed them all off. My grandfather and my cousin had to go to the city and fight the city, saying that it was due to the developments of these homes. It was proven through the samples from the land that it was from the development. I can see that happening over here off of JP West as well. There are lots of different types of habitats there. I think that we should go and protect that. Another thing that happened in Oregon City that I would hate to see here is that Oregon City has about four elementary schools. Because it was so overdeveloped so quickly, all of the schooling went down the drain and they became horrible, horrible schoolings for schools. They could not deal with overcrowding. My own elementary school was in such ruins that the kids were going and they had to actually purchase trailers for these kids to go to school in. Scappus only has the two elementary schools and they're divided between kindergarten and third grade and fourth grade and sixth grade. Where are these supposedly, at least, these are family homes, correct? Where are these kids going to go to school? I mean, we're going to have, we could have potentially up to 200, if not more, children in our school. Our schools are already going down the drain as it is. When I moved here, we had great schools reputation of eight, seven, eight for the elementary schools and high schools. Have you looked at them now? They're five and four. We've had a huge number right behind where I live. There were a lot of housing developments put in. About that's the time when the schools started going downhill. We need to consider the schools. Need to consider the habitats. We need to consider the flooding. This is not a good plan for the future of Scappus. Yep.
Yep. Lauren LaFrentz? Stay online. Lauren LaFrentz? Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, council. My name is Lauren LaFrentz and I would first like to disclose that my husband is an incoming city council member beginning in January. The opinion that I'm sharing tonight is my own and we have no financial interest either way in this proposed project, though I speak to you tonight as a neighbor and a citizen of Scappus. For context, my property includes a 100-year-old home on about two acres directly on the creek, less than 400 meters upstream from the proposed development. I believe the city engineer provided an estimate during the planning commission meeting of how long the peak flood stages occur for. The number that I heard was that he stated that the peak flood lasts only about 15 minutes. My experience living on the creek has been different than that. And as someone who has had their property flooded on average every two years, I have experienced the water remain high for longer than 15 minutes. Almost our entire two acres flooded with only the house being spared due to it being elevated and above the designated FEMA 500-year flood zone. The part of my property that's in the 100 and 500-year flood zone has been underwater every two years on average. I understand that the developer is saying they'll have houses, all the houses, two feet above the base flood elevation, but our experience is that this section of creek floods above that base flood elevation frequently. For example, we flooded three times in the last six years. From what I understand, our property was also included in this recent FEMA MAP amendment completed by the developer. So I'm referring to the very same revised base flood elevations that are included in the Buxton development proposal. This property proposal is comprised of land in the very same FEMA flood zones that fled frequently for us. So I'm wondering how it would not flood frequently downstream. We've spent hours in the middle of the night sandbagging our house as the waters rise and stay elevated for many hours, not just 15 minutes. I have concerns that the incorrect peak flood duration estimate is misleading to our decision-makers involved with this development proposal. I would also like to draw attention to our city's very own flooding webpage that clearly displays the exact Buxton property underwater. Another concern I have is about the additional 400 to 500 more vehicle trips along JP West Road every day that the traffic impact study estimates. I echo Counselor McHugh's concerns with pedestrians, especially our children accessing the park and walking to school. This is a stretch that only has sidewalks on very limited sections of the road and is controlled by a four-way stop at Southwest First Street. The amount of increased traffic is a serious public safety concern for residents. As someone with two young children under the age of three that walks to Veterans Park three to five times a week, I have experienced close calls with vehicles due to no sidewalks or shoulder on the majority of the streets nearby. To me, these 500 extra trips per day are 500 opportunities for a serious or fatal accident to happen. The number one priority for the city if this development is approved should be to ensure the public safety of our residents, especially in this area that's already dangerous with traffic and pedestrian conditions. The additional 600 feet of sidewalk that the developer proposes does not make up for the increased risk to pedestrians associated by these additional trips. I did not hear if the traffic impact study takes into account the cut-through roads that motor vehicles use to avoid the highway. I'm specifically referring to Fourth Street that cuts behind the middle school, yet another road with no sidewalks that has frequent child pedestrians. In closing, the number of public safety issues that this development raises should be highly scrutinized by the city of Scappus and our council, who's representing our best interests. I absolutely welcome growth and change when it's done safely and responsibly. I believe we need more housing that is affordable for families, but I'm not convinced that this is the right path to achieve that goal. I ask that you keep the city, or sorry, keep the safety of our Scappus residents and their families as the highest priority in your decision-making in this process. of our Scapoose residents and their families as the highest priority in your decision-making in this process. I want to thank you for listening and advocating for our voices and the well-being of Scapoose residents. We are counting on you to make the right decision for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Joel Haugen.
Mr. Mayor, Joel Haugen, I make a request that you defer to Attorney Kovak before me as good form.
Okay, Chris Kovak.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Bergy and council. I'm starting my timer right now. I represent Joel Haugen. I'm at, my address here is 1125 Northwest Cooch in Portland, and I'm a land use lawyer. I want to start by raising a procedural issue because we asked staff before this proceeding what our deadline was for submitting written material to respond to some of the stuff that the applicant submitted in their final argument before the Planning Commission. And staff told us we did not have that right in an email, that everything had to be verbal and we couldn't raise any new legal arguments. And I believe that violates the code, and it's a procedural error that I need to preserve tonight so that we can raise that later at Luba if necessary. I begin by looking at your code in Section 17162090, and it specifically states in Subparagraph D that upon an appeal or a recommendation, the City Council shall conduct a public hearing in the same manner prescribed by this chapter. And that's 17.162. When you go through the procedures in 17162130, there's no limitation on testimony being only oral. In fact, and there's no limitation on raising new issues. In fact, the instructions that your honor gave us said we have to raise all issues now in order to adequately preserve them. And that's, that's a standard admonition for a proceeding in a quasi-judicial hearing. But it also anticipates that the parties can raise new issues. And there's, like I said, there's no limitation on that. And in fact, in Subparagraph B of 117162130G, your code allows the applicant and those in favor to submit rebuttal testimony. Well, if we can't submit new testimony, new arguments, what would be the point of having rebuttal? And then it gets even, even better for us because the 17.162.160 is part of the chapter that applies to this hearing, and it specifically states that if we make a request, you have to keep the record open for seven days for new written testimony. So I raised this issue. I do believe we're entitled to written submissions. And I think your staff was wrong to tell us we couldn't do that. And I think it's real important because there was a lot of new information today that we would have responded to, and I think you're going to hear some more. For example, the applicant here is represented by a very good land use lawyer, and, and I suspect in rebuttal, he's going to get up and talk about the fact that because you have no alternative path under the needed housing statute, you can only apply clear and objective standards. That's not entirely true. It is true to a point. But, but the law is also clear that when an applicant asks for exceptions or variance to clear and objective standards, you can apply discretion to that part of the application. And here, if you look at it, they're asking for exceptions to the lot sizes through the PUD. That's not a clear and objective. That's an alternative path that you can use discretion and talk, look at compatibility, and you heard a lot of testimony today from neighbors. They're asking for exceptions to the block length standards. They clearly can't meet those clear and objective standards. So there's another element where discretion does come into play. We want to be able to develop that in writing in detail to preserve that for Luba. You heard a lot about the stormwater and the HOA. If you read their stormwater plan, this is really interesting because the default, if it's not maintained, this is that Record 329, the default is it flowed, the untreated water just flows into the creek. Now, Fish and Wildlife told you in writing that their biggest concern is protecting the most valuable resource, which is this creek. And yet, this plan, the default of this stormwater plan is if it's not maintained, their own experts said maintenance is imperative.
One minute, Mr. Kovak.
Because if it's not maintained, that untreated water is going to go into the creek. And, and, and talk about maintenance, that HOA, well, the city's trying to get this HOA to do something. If they don't maintain it, what happens? The default is all the untreated water goes directly into the creek. There's another really important issue, and I would really, really like it if I could get a couple of extra minutes here. Their whole plan for Phase Two is we're going to do permitted development, and we're going to raise the dirt up on Phase Two, and then we're out of the floodplain. But what they're proposing as development is a private stormwater pond. That's not development allowed in your floodplain at all. That's not a street improvement. In fact, of the one hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet of impervious surface that's going to go into those ponds, one hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet is from the houses, these eight hundred thousand dollar houses. That's not a public project. It's not a street project at all. It's private development.
Mr. Kovak, your time is up. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Kovak.
Thank you.
Mr. Haugen, your turn.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. I would like to note that the opening up for seven days for additional testimony and evidence so that Mr. Kovak can finish his arguments. You know, it seems very unfair that the applicant gets unlimited time, yet our attorney gets five minutes. And so he must allow that seven-day open period. Next, I'd like to do a quick review of some of the statements that were made by Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Sprague, just a kind of a context thing. You know, and I think your challenge tonight is to distinguish between some really good slick marketing and then reality. You know, so, so I'm just going to roll through a few points. So they maintained that the hydraulic analysis was very accurate and well-done. And it may well be for that small segment of the creek. But they didn't look at the entire watershed, nor did they look at the scour potential. And they refer to FEMA, which has acknowledged all their flaws. That FEMA is going through an under transformation at this very time to reflect the realities of climate change. So that was not factored in, nor were factors like Risk Factor, which appreciably show a different formula for the flooding. So those were just given short shrift. They maintained this is a very good application based on what? They maintained, Mr. Stevenson maintained this is a good, good plan for this piece of property based on what? That this is a thoughtful compromise based on what? That this is, the density is appropriate based on what? That they meet all the criteria? Well, I think Mr. Kovak has demonstrated that is not necessarily the case. That the homes will be safe from the flooding based on what? That the transition properties are appropriate? That the stormwater retention basins are going to meet the hundred-year events? That questionable? That there's an increase in habitat, really? And that the HEAs are enforceable? Well, I, you know, there's a lot of big questions here. And so you get into some of the minutia here, whether or not the PUD is compatible, the block length problems, the connectivity problems, the phasing of the FEMA's Phase One and Phase Two, and whether or not FEMA even is transformed in the interim. What happens then? The flood hazards are going to be incredible in the future as offered by other guests. And then we really, I want to reinforce then that the seven-day period for written procedures and written testimony really needs to be done. The procedural errors alone should indicate that. And in closing, I'd like to say you do have the discretion, utmost discretion this evening, to deny this application or at least condition it severely so that we can protect the community. Okay, thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you. Ivan Higgs. Ivan? You still online? No. Okay. All right. The next. What's your name? I thought I called you. Come on up, Pat. You know, I was calling people, and I must have like said, okay, I just called her.
All the time.
My mind jumped ahead of me.
No problem.
Welcome.
That's okay. First of all, Pat Anderson, I live in Scapoose. I live up on Columbia River View Estates. And I've lived in Scapoose for about twenty-seven years. Prior to living where I live now, we've lived up on Keys. So EM Watts and JP West were common routes home of the twenty-seven years that we've lived here. Again, repeating what everybody else has testified to, that we've seen the flooding occur year after year. I was also going to bring up, and I'll also make it a point as well because I found it quite extraordinary, when the city engineer said during the Planning Commission that that flooding event is over with in fifteen minutes. I think he meant fifteen hours. It's not fifteen minutes. But I think, in my mind, what this does, it was a perfect example of how much some of this is being minimized and how much is being misleading in order to, you know, go against whatever everyone is opposed to, is that this property floods. When it floods, it's, it's really bad, and it could have implications. In my letters prior to that Planning Commission, I had written two. One was in October. One was for the November session. There were two questions that I had posed that have never yet been answered. One had to do with a cost breakdown. They keep marketing this as being affordable housing. Someone mentioned that they have seen property in like the Beaverton areas going for eight hundred thousand dollars. I asked for them to provide a price point so we could tell whether it would be affordable housing. You tack on to that HOA fees. They still have not, even in the Planning Commission meeting in November, they have not even provided an estimate on what the HOA fees would be in addition to flood insurance. The houses, and with the rising interest rates, these houses are now going to be unaffordable. So let's not be swayed by this affordable housing. I also looked up David Weekly Homes, put this in one of my letters. Their Better Business Bureau rating for customer approval was like a 1.5 out of five stars. So they don't have a really good reputation. I also saw that over on the Washington side, they're building houses within the same price point, seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars.